I'll call this meeting in order with the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the system of the Constitution of Justice. Roll call.
Thompson. Thompson. Thompson here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Pittman. Pittman absent, Slattery. Slattery absent, Hullos.
Here.
Hullos here, Johnson. Johnson absent, Frausto.
Here.
Frausto here, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here, Viera.
Here.
Viera here, Rita.
Here.
Rita here, Donahue. Donahue absent, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Verenwell. Verenwell absent, Osling.
Here.
Osling here. Nine person.
Thank you very much. Next we move to the presidential presentation of general proceedings. I make a motion for a city councilman with the date of October 9th, 2018, and for the special meeting for October 16th, 2018. There are motion about Hullos, second by Holly. Any questions?
Roll call.
Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
I abstain from the minutes with October 9th, and aye for minutes for October 16th.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye.
Thank you very much. Next we move on to public comment. Again, we'll open up to the audience three minutes. We've got anything on the agenda. Get that, and move on. Uh, report of city officials' presentation resolutions. Uh, mayor's announcements. Uh, let me make this announcement. Uh, Brooklyn American Egyptos 50 present veterans. Today, again, it's Sunday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at Memorial Park. I'll repeat, at Memorial Park on Sunday at 11:00, November 11th, 2018. And I'm saddened to report the passing, as you can say, is a legend of Blue Island, uh, Mr. Lawrence Pettit, at age 89, of Blue Island. Uh, he was a very active member of the Calumet Township, serving as Democratic Commitment, Township Attorney, and Township Assessor, former Blue Island City Prosecutor, and former hearing officer for the Secretary of State, again, who'd be deeply missed, but as they say, never forgotten. May he rest in peace. Uh, city clerk?
No business.
Uh, any bids?
No bids.
Okay. Any bids?
No bids.
City treasurer?
Yes, Your Honor. All the elements of the administration have had an assuring in the transfer of money from the restricted and unrestricted funds, and the total of 343,731,142.
Make a motion. Do we have a motion, by Alderman? Hullos, second by Alderman. Osling, any questions? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ayes.
Thank you. Move this, Your Honor. Thank you. City attorney?
Yes, so, members of the city council. Item number one on the resolution should be removed. It will be placed back on the agenda at the next meeting. The proposed settlement agreement does not get then returned, signed to the city. Item number two is resolution number 201A, page 032. A resolution approving and authorizing a settlement agreement and release of claims concerning a software license and service agreement between the City of Blue Island and Passport Labs. Quickly, the, uh, the city worked out a new arrangement with Passport Labs. Uh, their services would be limited to, I believe it is, the mobile transactions at the parking lot, and it would be paying the city a sum of approximately $12,000. There are also some reductions in what they call the MPP services.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, maybe I'm thinking of something different, but I thought that this also had something to do with the ticketing of other city vehicles on the streets.
Uh, Mr. Marzal could probably answer that better.
Uh, yes, Alderman Carr. Uh, previously, the city had passed an agreement with MSI. It was new, it was going to be our new, uh, ticketing software for on-street parking violations.
Not these people?
No.
Oh, you're right. Now I remember. We did talk about that? Okay. I just slipped my mind for a minute. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please. Make a motion. Make a motion by Alderman Carr, Holly, second by Alderman Viera. Any questions again? Roll call.
Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye.
Thank you. Committee reports. Community development committee?
Yes, Your Honor. Our community development committee met on, uh, Tuesday, October 2nd. Uh, the meeting was called in order at, uh, 7:30. Present were Alderman Holly, Alderman Bellato, Alderman Frausto, Alderman Osling, Alderman Thompson, absent, Alderman Johnson, and Alderman Rita. Also present was Director of Finance, Mike Marzal. Community development, Howard Capali, Kevin Brown, Carlos Ruiz, and Joe Omira. Uh, under public comment, Director Marzal introduced Howard Capali. He comes to us from Park Ridge. He'll be overseeing the building and planning functions of the city. Joe Omira announced that he is working, uh, looking to expand the bios farm on some additional NWRD property just south of the first super church. On our new business, Carlos Ruiz, um, 1200 Artisan is looking for a variance on placement of a fence on his corner lot. After reviewing of the plans and pictures, it was moved by Alderman Frausto and second by Alderman Osling to approve. All were in favor. Uh, building department reports were reviewed for the month of August. Total revenues for the month of 39,895.22, bringing the total for the year through August 31st to 418,916.11. A total of 75 building permits, five homing permits, and eight electrical permits were issued in August. Housing Corp. had 117 continuances and issued $250 in fines on September 13th. A grant application from D Mars at Restaurant, 12941 Western Avenue, was reviewed. They're looking to replace the awning on the north side of the building, some lighting, and improve the windows facing Western Avenue and the larger window facing High Street with more efficient double-pane windows. They'll also be replacing the front door with a wider door and a stationary glass portion to make it easier for people in wheelchairs to enter. Alderman Bellato suggested using black or bronze for the framing for the windows. The suggestion will be passed on. It was moved by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Osling to approve the reimbursement grant for a maximum of $5,000 or 50% of the project cost. All were in favor. Motion passed. An update on the business development district and discussion of possible next steps was had. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Osling to adjourn. All were in favor, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:35 p.m. The next meeting is scheduled for November 6th, which is Election Day. The meeting has been moved to Wednesday, November 7th, at 7:30 p.m. in City Council chambers.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Finance committee met on October 16th. Members present, Alderman Frausto, Viera, Holly, Verenwell, Thompson, and Osling. Also present was Director Mike Marzal and Janelle Hunt, Bob Manthei and Alderman Rita and Alderman Carr. Those now called with hammock. Finance reviewed and approved accounts payable for 10/26/2018 in the amount of $761,108.38. I make a motion to cancel to approve.
Make a motion. Do we have a second, Alderman Viera? Any questions? Alderman, go ahead.
I am, uh, if you can bear with me, I do have a couple of questions. And I realize this first one is kind of a small thing. There's a bill for Bager's Pizza that was coded to the 911 center, and it looks to me like there's only one person working there, and it was $122.63. That's a lot of pizza for one person. I'm just kind of wondering, that was back, it says it was back in July the 20th?
I think if that was one of the ones that were working, might be Task Force might have been working. We can, I can double check on that.
I'm, I'm just wondering if that's coded to the right account?
All right, maybe it isn't. It might be one of the major crimes task force.
Uh, we do believe that that's from the major crimes task force. I'll check the coding on that, um, but we did have access.
Okay, and then, um, another one. There's a bill for C. Roberts Consulting Engineering, and that was coded to legal?
You don't pay those one?
Uh, it's on page four. And I was wondering if that's an engineering company, why was that?
That was, so it was for a, uh, a legal case, Davidson versus Blue Island.
Okay. And then, this isn't actually, well, it's on the payables, but it brings up a bigger question. Greenfield's Landscape?
What page are you on?
Um, page six. And it's for $1,100 for vacant property maintenance? It's right at the top, at the top. And my question is, if we're getting a grant to pay for that, shouldn't that grant be reflected on the, um, on the, like, the expense revenue versus expense report? Because it looks on the, on the expense report, it looks like there's a huge cost overrun for vacant property maintenance, but if that money was put into, I don't know, maybe you could help me, Tom.
Well, here.
You're, you're the CPA. It's like, if, if that money is received, it should be an offset on that account, but the account doesn't show any offset. It only, it only shows an expensive, like, $58,000 for, and I know you didn't answer my email, and I appreciate that, but I'm thinking that...
It, it can be done that way, but it's, it's not necessarily has to be, it doesn't have to be done that way. It probably flows through a grant, a revenue account.
It says when, when we do the appropriations, we have the, um, we have the grants, I'll try to find, it's like, grant passed through, and that's part of the appropriations, then when we receive that money, shouldn't that be entered on that same line?
The way that we use our fund accounting, we show the revenue on the revenue side, and I believe, if I recall, I don't know the account number, but there's an account for that grant, and since we don't know how many lawns we're going to be maintaining over the, over the summer, it does show a negative. You are correct, because we don't know how much we're going to be doing. We do get reimbursed on a quarterly basis. We have to pay the bill first, we submit it to, um, the grant, and then they send us a check.
Okay, so, I guess my, my thought process is, and that shouldn't show as an expense?
But it is an expense.
But we've been reimbursed for it?
And that check comes with revenue.
All right, it would be easier, I don't know. It seems like it would be easier to understand if it was on the same line. On, on page seven, under Menards, that was coded to equipment maintenance and repair, but it just says hardware materials for the Chicago Fire Event?
Yes.
So, maybe that should be small tools or something, and not?
No, that was...
Maintenance and repair? I, I don't know.
That was, uh, actual costs incurred by, um, both EMA and, um, other departments associated with the Chicago Fire Event, and we did receive over $10,000 from the tip of that.
I, I understand that. I understand, should it be under equipment repair?
That was aligned, and it seemed most appropriate for the expenses. We don't have an expense for filming expenses.
And then also, as long as you're up there, Mike, I had sent you an email about the expenses listed under tip two.
Is that the one associated, um, was for, I quoted Robinson Engineering?
Well, yeah, and Eric did answer about the, the two invoices, and I understand that, but if you look on the appropriations under tip two... We appropriated $300,000 for special projects, and we spent $511,000. I don't know what that special project is, and there's a cost overrun on engineering of $27,903. And that was, as the report you gave us was dated September the 28th.
We can look into that.
Okay, um...
I will not prepare any questions.
I'm, I'm concerned, because at the finance meeting, uh, Mr. Horvath said that certain legal things were miscoded, and as I was looking at this, I, I started to wonder how many other things have been miscoded? Are there other, you know, because some of these, these overruns are huge, and to me, that brings up the question of, have those, do those belong somewhere else?
Staffs review all the areas where we're over, seeing where projects were posted to, and reposting if it's appropriate.
Okay, um, just two more things. I wanted to point out that the fire department has used all of their money allocated for the year. Um, I, I deducted their, or I removed their payroll, so that's completely separate. And their, before this accounts payable, they were $345 in the negative for the year. So that means basically, unfortunately, chief, you've got nothing left to spend for November and December. I don't, I don't know.
We're going to continue to operate the fire department?
Well, I'm not saying we should...
Unless council does not want us to respond to emergency calls.
No, that, that would be ridiculous. What I'm saying is, I don't know how the spending got out of hand, and no one, no one seemed to be paying attention.
Staff reviews budgets on a quarterly basis, as well as monthly basis, and there are certain areas, such as truck repairs, that are out of our control, and our budget was significantly cut based off of previous year's experience for what our budgets were. Therefore, um, I'm not going to let a truck go down and not get it repaired, so that it won't be able to go out.
Okay, and then, under revenue, our estimated, and this is according to the appropriation, our estimated revenue for this year was supposed to be $18,318,000. That's what, that's what it's got in this report. Our year-to-date revenue, as of this report, so not really year-to-date, but as of this report, was only $11,235,000. So, I'm thinking we have a huge revenue, revenue shortfall? Money that hasn't been collected?
Yes.
And I'm thinking we need, as a council, we need to know exactly where the city stands financially. I mean, if we have that, I figured at the time it was like 2.75 million shortfall at the time that this report was run, and as a council, I think we need to, um, find out where exactly we stand financially before we keep approving things to be paid.
And as I stated in my response email to you, I will be sending out a monthly report on where we are at in terms of both revenues and expenses.
Could we have, like, Dave Meyer come and do a presentation?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have Dave Meyer come and do a presentation as to where we are financially.
You know, I think we need to make a motion, we'll just make a suggestion that get on here in the next, we'll reach, I'll reach out, we'll bring them up in the next meeting, so he can do a presentation. And I say, possibly.
Are those...
Yeah, so we'll bring them. Anything else? Alderman, 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 Rita?
Do we have enough revenue to cover the bills for this accounts payment?
Yes.
Um, what is the plan between now and December 31st to get our spending under control? Eric, do we have a plan?
Again, it's all set up and all departments do limit their spending to only essential items. Uh, as I indicated at our special meeting, we will have to do a tax anticipation warrant again in early 2019, uh, because we don't have revenues coming in until April, and that is between January and April, a very lean period of time. So even when we do pass the appropriation, staff will be instructed not to spend any money until we have revenues coming in.
And the tax anticipation warrant, that is essentially borrowing money?
Yes.
To pay?
Expenses until we can get revenue coming in.
Like we've done...
Like we've done for the past...
I mean, if that's something new. Eating a fella. Just eating a fella, that's all.
Sorry.
I gotta hang too. It's nothing new.
Anything else, Alderman?
Also, when I went to the finance committee, I noticed that nobody asked about revenue. When, when I went to the finance committee, I noticed that nobody had asked any questions regarding revenue. Do you normally, or do you go through the appropriations when you are about to, um, vote on the expenses?
Did you all?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yes.
I said I'm fine, so I don't remember that.
Yep, we did it, we did it quarterly.
I don't remember that.
Yes, we did.
Okay, okay, fine. No, we did not.
And no, we did not do it either. I'm, I'm not looking for an argument, or, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I asked a question, because I've only been to one finance meeting.
Can you hear Alderman Viera, please?
Go ahead, you know what?
No, I want to hear Alderman Viera. She was on finance.
I'm just dating a fella, also, that when Alderman Rita was in charge of sharing finance, we did not do any revenue. That is false. That is a complete lie. We did it quarterly. With Matt Anastasia, we shared it.
Order!
And we were in the black.
Order!
And, may I ask that?
We got a motion? Anderson.
Thompson.
I don't know what I'm voting for. Why we got... Accounts payable.
On accounts payable, I'm going to say this. I voted no in the meeting because of one item for Robinson Engineers, and that has been taken care of, so my vote is aye.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thompson. Carr.
Oh, I, I have some severe reservations, but I will vote aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Abstained.
Bellato abstained. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, payroll for 10/5/2018 in the amount of $365,619.82, I make a motion to approve.
Make a motion for a second. Alderman Thompson, any questions?
Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye.
Okay, a resolution to enter in passport agreement renewal was passed by finance committee. Um, there being no further business, motion to adjourn at 8:30. Our next meeting, because of voting, meeting was moved to Wednesday, November 7th, 7 o'clock Eastern.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
No, report, Your Honor. Our next meeting will be November 13th at 6 o'clock here in East Adams.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Uh, we just had our meeting, um, right before council, so I will have minutes, and, um, our next meeting is November 27th, 2018, at 16:00. We'll see you next.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Judiciary Committee? Any report?
Oops.
Yeah. Okay. Any automatic announcements or comments? Um, go ahead, Alderman.
I'm going to address, um, senior attorney of City Engineers, Mr. Eric Alvarez. No, you don't have to get up. I just want to let the council know that the problems we had in FIP award, they've been taken care of with the contractor, and I'm satisfied with what's going on, and I thank you for taking care of that, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you, Alderman.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, welcome to Eisenhower High School. I see all my peeps out there, and I just wanted to say thanks for coming, and, um, hope you learned something tonight.
Just get a hands up from my house. There you go. Congratulations. Welcome, welcome, everyone. Uh, any other, Alderman? Now, I'm going to make, I'm going to make an announcement for Chicago Fire. Who's fans of Chicago Fire are on? What day do they come out on? You don't know. What time do they come out?
Wednesday. Thank you.
So, tomorrow is October the 24th. Uh, Blue Island, yeah, Blue Island episode one of them, because I think they filmed two episodes. One of them is, is going to be showing air tomorrow.
It's all the same?
It's all the same? Okay. At 8:00, and that's on Channel 5, I'm not going to say it, right? So again, I know there's certain parties, watch parties throughout the city, so again, if you don't see yourself or see areas that you're familiar with in town, uh, it's going to air. I think our city treasurer had something to say.
I'd like to interject here, if I can, is that basically, that I've been listening the past few months, the council's concerned about the money coming in, money going out, financial questions and so forth, and I've had some discussions with Mr. Marzal at our
I've reached out to Mr. Myers and had a short discussion with him, uh, that I requested that he make a presentation, uh, to the current time, also projecting till December, where we're at, and then also projecting till March, okay, March 31st also, and hopefully, as soon as he can make this presentation, it will be brought in front of council.
All right.
That will resolve a lot of those issues. Uh, I've also, I haven't done yet, but I'm gonna be calling, uh, Foster and Foster for the, uh, actuarial report. They've only done once a year, uh, the pension, fire police pension, to bring the council so up to date exactly what's, what's coming up and what's, uh, what he requires from the actuarial report before we do the levy. Okay? So, hopefully, if it's not done by the, our first meeting in November, hopefully, Mr. Myers will be, so the second meeting for sure.
Alderman, go ahead.
Have we paid the Fire and Police Department funds for this year, for the pensions, for the pensions?
The pension fund goes directly from the county, and the levy goes directly.